It is 3:03?
I have 3 o'clock.
3 o'clock. That's 3 o'clock, according to the city clerk. It's 3 o'clock. Meeting is now called to order. This is the work session for the City of Sims, March 7, 2017. Roll call.
Mayor Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Watts.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Webb's accent. Councilmember Platt.
Here.
Councilmember Shire.
Here.
Very good. First item, number three, is a total of the minutes from the previous work session council meeting, February 21, 2017. Okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Very good. Next item is item number four, presentation, Sims Municipal Fire Department, February monthly report. Chief Brooks, you have the floor, sir.
Just a moment.
We'll get to it. Need that bank of lights off? Would that help? No.
All right, for the month of February, we've got a hot shot for more different runs. Out of 100% of our runs, 73.68% were rescue and emergency. 7.37% service calls. 8.42% were good intent calls. 4.21% were false alarm or false calls. And 6.32% were fires. Broken down to our major incident types, we had 12 fires, 140 rescue and emergency medical service calls, 14 service calls, 16 good intent calls, and eight false alarm or false calls. For a total of 190 calls. That makes up 100% of our calls. So, broken down into detail, we had four building fires, one fire in a motorhome camp or recreational vehicle, two forced woods or wildland fires, one brush, a brush and grass mixture fire, one grass fire, one outside rubbish fire, two outside rubbish fires were trash or waste fires, 78 medical assists, four emergencies, emergency medical service, 40 EMS calls excluding a vehicle accident with injury, six motor vehicle accidents with injuries, 12 motor vehicle accident with no injuries, one service call, four public assists, one public service call, eight assistant ambulance, one good intent call, 13 dispatch and council en route, two smoke scared odor of smoke calls, four false alarm or false calls, one system malfunction, one alarm system activation not fire unintentionally, and two carbon monoxide detector activation. And that gives us 190 calls. That makes up our 100%. Total training for the month, company drill training, a little over 177 hours, continuing education, a little over 32 hours, driver operator training, 84 hours, firefighter health and wellness, 81, multi-company drills, 24 hours, continuing officer education, 52 hours, and pre-incident walkthroughs in our occupancies, 84 hours. So, with our 21 full-time personnel, and we had two part-time personnel that worked during that month, we had a combined total of over 535 hours of training. Some of the upcoming events with the fire department, Azalea Festival coming up this Saturday, we've got two budgets set up. We're gonna have a lock and roll. Sparky will be there for the kids. We're gonna have a smoke trailer for the kids. This is the trailer that we can generate fake smoke, and they can crawl around, check doors, and we can just talk to them about public safety. We also, we'll have fire provincial literature given out. Our citizens academy's coming up in April. We'll have applications there for people to sign up. We'll also be signing people up for our ongoing smoke alarm installation program. And there is a former Sims firefighter that we just found out the other day, that he has 15-month-old son, and he has a rare form of cancer, and we're gonna be taking up that nation's free. We also got pump tests for all our trucks coming up in March, March 15, post-test at the end of March. Citizens Academy will start April the 10th and run through June the 5th, and that's gonna be an eight-week course. We'll have about 15 to 20 people in that class. Right now, we're doing, we're doing applications, and we'll have an interview process, a selection process for those candidates. And then, we're gonna be teaching a fire officer one class. It's a 40-hour fire college class for our upcoming officers, running from the 10th of April through the 14th. And then, our ongoing smoke alarm installation program, we probably put in about 30 to 40. Our goal is 100, so it's going pretty well. Any questions?
Mr. Smith. On the traffic-related accidents, do they cluster anywhere, or are they distributed around the area? Are there any hot spots?
There are pretty much Schillinger's and Moffett Road, and McCrayer and Moffett Road is where we get most of our accidents.
Do you foresee that's gonna get approved with the completion of this intersection here, or?
I think 158, if it continues with the construction that's gonna go on in June, and once that's finished, that's gonna alleviate a lot of traffic on 98, and that's gonna, that's gonna lower our accidents. As far as, I think it's gonna help, but it's not gonna alleviate everything.
Do you have an update on that piece of equipment we had trouble with?
Yeah, we had, we had an engine, engine three at Station Three that went down the other night. We had a mobile home fire, had a little pump trouble with it. It's in the shop right now and waiting for a report on it. Haven't gotten back to that. We still have a tanker, tanker one that's, we put in service at Station Three, and also the brand-new Engine One, KME, that's training center, so.
So, it's not a problem?
Not a problem.
How did that thing on Snow Road, was there anything to do with that yesterday? Did I ask you about the fire?
I didn't do a report back from it. It was probably.
I got a phone call, but we checked it out, it wasn't a problem. All right, Mr. Watts, any question? Mr. Platt?
No.
Mr. Shire?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
Mayor.
Very good.
Mayor Baker.
Ma'am?
We do have one more presentation.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Denise has an update on the Freedom Celebration for us.
Very good.
I just felt to add it to the agenda.
So, that's fine. Mr. D. Glad to talk with you.
I'm actually doing the presentation for Ashley McLean of Orchard Simley. She wasn't able to be here and asked me to please take care of this for her.
Sure.
They are once again asking for help with the Freedom Fest, which is a citywide Fourth of July, pardon me, celebration. Council has always helped sponsor this in the past. At this point in time, I think $10,000 has been budgeted as a donation towards this. They're asking if there's any way y'all could possibly consider increasing that a little bit. The fireworks show, which I've not been, I can't wait for this year, but the fireworks show is essentially the same as in the past, however, each year, the cost of the fireworks and the cost of fuel goes up. So, they'll be paying more for that. They also have two main stage artists, a Southern Christian group, The Martins, and also a contemporary Christian group, Finding Favor. I'm not familiar with these groups. I think Brandy is aware of who they are, and they are excellent entertainment. They're also thinking about doing a smaller stage and featuring local entertainment before the main stage events. The totals for the musical groups and fireworks this year is, where did my price go? It disappeared. Okay, hang on. I think she told me it's $16,500 for the total fireworks and musical groups. So, she wanted me to please make an appeal to the council that if you can fund some additional funds in the budget to maybe up this previously approved amount, they would be very appreciative. Like I said, you know, this is a citywide Fourth of July celebration, that even though Sims itself doesn't put this on, we've always been a big supporter of it. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other presentations?
No, sir.
Okay. Next, financial report, review of checks for signature. Any further discussion on the checks? Anyone?
No question.
Okay, it's just discussions. Okay, okay. Very good. Moving on, item number six, review and discussion of proposed ordinances. We have no proposed ordinances. Moving on, review and discussion of proposed resolutions. Basically, we have the first one, which is 7A, authorizing the position of property clerk. This would not require additional funding, as it is a redirect of personnel assets within our current footprint. Basically, though, as you read the work assignment, the job assignment, the job description, it tackles an area that we have yet to address or nail down, and that being city property. And I think if we aggressively manage our property through the use of this person and this job, we would be much better off at the end of the day. Because the attitude should be that at any given time, we know precisely what we have by quantity, item, nomenclature, serial number, location. It should be tagged, it should be marked, and there should be no room for doubt as to what is or is not city property. And it also makes it easier at the time when we have the inventory, or if something should come up missing, from something from as small as someone's laptop to a truck. So, it's always good to track, it's always good to track by serial number, and it also will help us with warranties. Because as you know, a lot of times, when you buy, when you buy a new item of equipment, it comes with a warranty. Well, if you don't pay attention to the warranty, and you don't use the free benefits assigned to a warranty, you lose money, and that's not good. So, that's basically what we're talking about with this job description, in a nutshell. Any further discussion on 7A?
Well, I think this is well-considered, and in fact, this is the first thing the mayor identified in taking office. This is something that needed to be done, and it is really essential to us being accountable to the public for the funds and the equipment that they've entrusted to us to do their job. So, I'm happy that we are at the point of actuating this.
Very good. Mr. Watts, any comments? Mr. Platt, any comment?
No, sir.
Mr. Shire?
Yeah.
Very good. Continuing on, the next item, item B, is an ABC application for Sura sushi and hibachi. I'll let you take a moment to read that. My understanding is they have, this is a renewal, correct? This is a renewal for the ABC application. They had ABC, they had liquor sales in there already, and this is a renewal. Everyone should know where that added. Directly behind the library. Any questions on that? If y'all want to take a minute to look at all, go ahead. No comment? Anybody?
I'd like to see alcohol taken out of Sims.
Okay. Any other comment?
Comment.
Mr.? Mr. Shire, any comment?
I'm sure.
Mr. Platt? Very good. Mr. Smith?
No question.
Very good. Moving on, next item is item C, authorizing the mayor to sign checks for standard reoccurring expenditures. As you'll see there, I'll give you a minute to look at that. There are, and we asked our distinguished counsel to look into this and make sure this is an appropriate thing to do. There are some reoccurring bills that obviously happen month after month after month. The amounts change a little bit, but not that much, and if they aren't signed quickly, we incur possible penalties, late fees, which we would like to avoid. So, basically, what we've done here is we have, with our attorney's help, captured on Exhibit A, which is the back of the document, those items which, if the council approves, I would be able to sign these reoccurring expenses without having to get council approval. You'll also note that if, for example, let's say the power bill, every month at 200, 200, 200, if suddenly it jumped up even, you know, a moderate amount, we would not use that as part of the reoccurring process, we would resubmit that to council for approval. That way, we would manage by exception on that item. But that is the theory behind it. Give you all a minute to look at that.
Mr. President, my understanding, we will still have the actual check detail printed out, in other words, all the checks will be printed out here, so.
Yes, sir.
That we don't have to look at the physical check.
Yes, sir. Any discussion on 7C? Mr. Watts?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Platt?
One question.
Sure.
What is RJG?
RJG is the leaseholder of this building.
Okay, thank you. Good question, and obviously, that's an ultimate change.
I think this is fantastic, we can say what's happening, we can hold those checks every day.
You'll still have checks, but it will be.
I agree.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Any other discussion on that?
Let the meetings run faster.
Yeah, it would. Very good. That's it for 7C. We're moving on now to item D, authorizing the expenditure of funds to purchase a back hoe loader. As you recall, I believe at the last council meeting, Jason gave us a briefing on that item. And Mr. Smith, as the finance chair, what are your, I guess we'll start comments and discussion with you. You have the floor, sir.
Well, for full disclosure, I'm definitely a proponent of this. I believe it'll be very, very helpful, and I think it will pay for itself in a very short time, increase the efficiency and capability of the public works department. I'm gonna ask that be referred to the finance committee, meets next Monday, to make sure we have the money in the bank and to pay for it, and maybe bring it up for the next meeting for a final vote of the council.
That's what I have. Any further discussion? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor, I talked with Mr. Franklin, and I know he's been busy, we haven't had time to follow through on this. I would like maybe a consideration for an amendment to this, to have added a trailer for transportation of the equipment, because I see it as a very valuable public safety tool. We may have to transport that thing 25, 30 miles, we don't wanna be.
That's a good point. Island down the street. You're not known for speed, are you? Okay. Very good.
Well, that actually has been taken into consideration on this, in that this is a road-capable machine, has lights and everything to be able to get down the road, and it's a tire, it's not a tread, but if I might suggest, we could handle the trailer on a zipper.
Okay.
For this, this is a, well, I deal with one particular vendor.
Okay. Is that all right with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Very good. Then, item D will be referred to the finance committee for further discussion, and as it is on this agenda, assuming you get ready in two weeks, we'll have it as a regular item on the agenda. Very good. Next item is authorizing the expenditure of funds for park maintenance contract. I believe Jason gave us some information on this last meeting. Give you all an opportunity to look at that document. It's the one behind the backhoe document. It's fairly self-explanatory, and the idea, the theory behind it is to have a better, a little more technical application of pesticides and management of the park, and save money at the same time. As you know, contracting out can at times save money and give you a better product. You would notice the last paragraph that says, "Be further resolved. Said services and projects shall be competitively bid if required by law, and if competitive bids are not required by law, at least two quotes for such services should be obtained, and that the mayors authorize and negotiate inter-appropriate contracts for sale." Any further comment on park maintenance contract? Mr. Watts?
I just think it's great, the purpose signs, and all, like you said, licensed people doing, you know, and.
Yeah.
The type of lives and all that. That's great.
Well, it's a, it's a serious business. It can be dangerous business, and if you put down the wrong thing, you could not only harm the environment, but it could be plant, so. Mr. Platt, you tell me.
I'm good.
And Mr. Shire?
The only question I have is the municipal park with the pond. We need to make sure that whoever gets this contract knows that they have to be very careful about the chemicals in the ponds.
Good point. Good point. Very good point. Yes. We have fish in it. Very good. Mr. Smith?
I just had a question. Is this person also a horticultural expert? In other words, are they going to be making sure the right plants are in there, or is that a different department?
That's, that would be part of it. Jason, you elaborate on that a little bit?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Come on in for a second. We've already got a few, we're gonna have to do some, put a little bit of due diligence to make sure that not to exceed your rights, and several companies, all three of the companies that we talked to are professionals, professional landscapers, so they know what plants to do better where, the proper feeding, the proper maintenance, the pesticides, herbicides, things like that, fertility. It would be all-around management of it.
Good. I've been hit pretty hard by some of the citizens on this subject about what's going on there.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure, so this one expert, or one, let's call it that.
It'd be one company.
Person or company will have the whole responsibility. That's good.
And the city would just cut grass?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
That'd be the only function?
They cut trash, cut grass, weed eat, edge, blow.
Yeah, yeah.
Another more or less related question, the irrigation system, is your replacing that or have replaced that?
We have an irrigation system at the Honor Park, but the other locations do not have irrigation, so that requires man-hour and.
That's, asking about the Honor Park. You fixed that?
Yes, it's fine. There might be some relocation due to moving plants, moving some plants, but they're gonna manage that as well.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Okay. Anyone else have a question about item D? Very good. Moving on, committee reports. Financial planning. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. The committee got together to check out a software package for the accounting system, one that had been recommended by our auditor, and we have yet to look at another system. We will be, hope to be bringing some kind of recommendation to the council on. We will be, hope to be bringing some kind of recommendation to the council on that within the next 30 days. That tends to be a major project if we, assuming we do buy a new financial package because all the accounting has to be changed over to the new system. There's quite a bit of detail to that. But moving on from there, website, it's, construction is just about to get underway for a new website, and we're looking for a, basically, enterprise portal. That is to say, one where it would actually be something more than just a card sitting up there saying, "Here we are." It'll actually be one where people can get in there, can get forms, fill them out, and file them, actually do business with the city. And hopefully, one of the big things about it is, and communications department has it, to let people know what's going on, and we're already doing that with the existing website. Denise is putting a lot of fresh things on there, increasing the readership, and we hope that the new website will further enhance her ability to put on pictures and videos and information and make it a central promotion point for the city. And finally, financial reporting. We hope to begin for the second half of the year, which is coming up very shortly now, second half of the fiscal year, begin regular financial reporting on the website, so anyone in town or anywhere in the world can look in and see what our city's doing. And if they're thinking about moving here, they'll see we're open and above board and welcoming and places they want to come to stay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Mr. Webb is absent today, so we will defer his report to the next meeting. Mr. Platt, public secretary?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a formal report. I'm finding that having our committee meeting the same day as the council meeting kind of cuts into the time, but...
Understand.
We're making tremendous progress. We...
You had a good turnout.
Well, good turnout, and we're fully involved with our schools, and we are starting our community action group. The chief is getting the citizens academy underway, and maybe next council meeting, I can get some really good reports. Everybody's working, and it looks really good.
Great, great. And along with your comment on the schools, we had a very good meeting with the principal of Sims Middle School and Mr. Harwell, the commissioner, the Friday before the students were given margarole break. That was a very positive meeting, and appreciate the council members who could make it that day showing up, and we had a very good exchange, very good morning. And I agree, I think we're making progress. Very good. All right. Are there any council, legal council or staff comments? Is there any other business that might come before the meeting? Oh, I'm sorry, we missed your report. Jerry, did you have any?
I didn't. I gave my report last council meeting.
Okay.
Not committee meetings. It's Thursday, so I have that to read.
Okay, I understand. You'll be at the next, you'll report on the next meeting. Very good. All right. Is there any other business that might come before the meeting? Any other comments from staff, legal? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? We are adjourned until 4:00 PM. Thank you. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the regular session of the City Council meeting. Time is four o'clock, meeting is not called order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Watt?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Webb's accent. Councilmember Platt?
Here.
Councilmember Shirey?
Here.
All right, we would like to ask Mr. Byrd if he would lead us in our invocation.
Bless pray. Our Lord and Heavenly Father, we thank you for a beautiful day you've given to us. We thank you for your presence with us here in this meeting. We thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that are ours in you, for the cross, for your perfect sinless life, for the sacrifice that you gave for us, the atonement for our sins, and for our healing. We thank you for your ministry today as our high priest. We magnify and we glorify and praise your name, for you, Lord, only, or the worthy one and the sinless one, and we thank you, Lord, for what you've done. Lord bless the proceedings of this meeting and give us your wisdom in everything that we do. Give us safety on the highways, and we thank you for these blessings in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Before we do the pledge, I wanted to take a moment and acknowledge an important promotion, one of our very own. Sergeant Paul Bailey is now lieutenant of Paul Bailey, so let's keep him in the house. Now he's been promoted, he won't be here as much, but he said he'll come by whenever he can.
Oh, he can.
All right, we're going to ask you to lead our pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mr. President, I believe we approve these minutes.
Second. Roll call, vote.
You want to roll call, you said?
No, we can just do all in favor. All in favor? Any opposed? Good, minutes approved. There are no presentations or guest speakers, as far as I know, are there?
No, sir.
Item seven is approval of checks for signature. Earlier in the work session, we reviewed the checks. Before we vote, is, are there any questions regarding checks approval? Anyone? Any questions wanted? Very good. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirey?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Very good, and moving on. Item eight, there are no ordinances. Item nine, resolutions. There is one resolution that we will not look at tonight, it is item nine D, which is authorizing the expenditure of funds to purchase a backhoe loader. That is going to be deferred to the finance committee for further evaluation. Okay. I would like to submit items A, B, C, and E for immediate consideration.
So move?
I agree.
Okay. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirey?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Very good. Now we will discuss each one in turn before a motion to vote. The first item is nine A, authorizing the position of property book clerk. This was discussed during the work session. Are there any additional comments or questions regarding resolution nine A?
Mr. President, I believe this is well considered and carefully thought out and presented, and I think we're ready to vote on it right now. We approve it.
Second. Very good. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watt?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirey?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Very good. Item nine B is a resolution, ABC application for Sakura sushi and hibachi. Again, this was discussed during the work session. This is a recurring application for this restaurant. They've had a liquor license in the past, and this renews the liquor license. Any further discussion on this?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirey?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yeah. Next item is resolution C, authorizing the mayor to sign checks for standard reoccurring expenditures. Again, you have the document in front of you, but we're talking about checks that rarely change from month to month, and that if we don't get them paid in a timely fashion, we can incur fees, which we would like to avoid whenever possible. And as I said earlier, if what has been a standard reoccurring for X number of dollars jumps, we will notify the council and act accordingly. You will still see the check, it will still be entered on the check roster. Okay. Is there, are there any other questions regarding item nine C?
Mr. President, I believe this has been very, very helpful and educational to actually have us look at the checks and get a grasp of all of the activities of the city, and I believe this is a good move we're doing here for efficiency, to make our bookkeeping system and our payables go out on time, and I believe this will serve us well if we adopt this, this resolution.
Very good.
I'm looking for approval.
Second. Okay. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirey?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. As I said earlier, item D has been pulled from the resolutions for today, has been referred to the finance committee, and the finance committee will discuss it, and if they're able to meet before the next council meeting, we'll review it then. All right. Item nine E is authorizing the expenditure of funds for park maintenance contract. I think we discussed that in rather serious detail during the work session. Are there any questions regarding item nine E? Any other questions, comments?
I think it's something we should need to do definitely, to take the burden off our Public Works Department, and it's a really good practice.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I think the...
It's a motion to adjourn.
I think the public will be very, very happy with this.
Second. There was a motion to adopt, and a second. Roll call, vote.
Councilmember Watts?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Platt?
Yes.
Councilmember Shirey?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Next, we move into comments and announcements. I want to remind everyone of three things. In particular, as you know, this Saturday, we have the Isaiah Festival. That is a major event for our area, very well attended, a very popular day. I looked at the weather today, and so far, it looks like we're on track. So hopefully, the weather will continue to smile upon us, and we will not have any issues. But that is this Saturday, 11th of March, at Mary G. McGarry High School. Secondly, Family Night movie is going to be on the 24th of this month at the community center, and it is free. Free movie, free popcorn, free soda, and it will be The Wizard of Oz. Okay. And finally, tonight at 6:30 at the community center, Commissioner Connie Hudson will be chairing a public meeting regarding questions on the Sims branch of the Mobile County Public Library. So I would encourage everyone to attend. The city council has been invited. I will attend, and I know as many of the council members will attend as can possibly attend. Basically, the point of the meeting, as it was explained to me, is informational. I'm sure, though, that there will be some questions asked, and I'm sure Commissioner Hudson will do a good job of answering those questions. All right. Any other comments or announcements that I may have missed? Anyone? Any public comments?
None.
All right, very good. Any other business that might come before the meeting? Is there a motion to adjourn? Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. The vote.